I'd like to welcome everybody out and ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll start right off with 3.0 approval of agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 4.0 consent agenda. Does anybody have an item they would like pulled from the consent agenda? A motion please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.0 board update. Just gonna say real quick, reminder to fill out our evaluation forms. And oh, this month's board informational item is our Schoology tutorial. So that's our educational item this month. So that's all I have.
All right, I'll say something. At the work session coming up in a couple weeks, of course, we'll hear about the how financials are looking for 14, 15, but just a preview on that, that things are really closing the year really well. Revenue slightly above budget, expenses are slightly below budget. So each zone will have a positive carry forward coming into this year, which is nice. We do have to build our fund balance up a little bit to meet our, our policy requirements, but we'll still have, have some good, good opportunity for carry forward coming into, into this year. Right now, the expense budget for the general fund is at 99.2%. So that's fitting right squarely within the, the target window that we want, because we want, because you know, the, the funding fund is about operations, it's about funding the operations every year. It's not about accumulating funds for, for capital and things like that. So as much as possible, we need to spend that money in, in that current year, and that's what we're, we're trying to do. So that, that is all coming together really well. And like I said, we'll, we'll give you more details at the work session. Because the final, the final big piece is, is the August payroll, which is actually accrued back into the prior year, and that will post tomorrow. We'll get some of that massage out next week, but it should be in time for the board packet for the work session. Separately, I wanted, I wanted to let you guys know that I, I had a great opportunity last week to go down to Arizona. I was invited to Arizona to speak about our student-based financial management process that we have here. Went down and was, the meeting was basically organized by Lisa Graham Keegan, who's the former state superintendent of schools in Arizona. And it was attended by 17 members of the state legislature in Arizona. And they, and quite a few national groups, national experts, if you will, about, about this. I was pleased that basically our, our process of putting really almost 82% of per people revenue in the hands of principals would rank us right at the top of, of everything that, that they have and that they were presenting. But the only one that was bigger was New Orleans, and that's because New Orleans rebuilt everything, including that, you know, after Hurricane Katrina. We were, we were really better than every other school district that they had profiled. So another opportunity will be coming for that in, in September, September 3rd, and actually will be up in Denver. So a local opportunity to go talk with a lot of those same folks, national folks, as well as some of the Colorado schools that are doing it, including us.
And I want to report on, on three things very quickly. One is that multiple members of our district's zone and, and central leadership have been invited to present at various conferences. And so over the last month, we had Mr. Green and Ms. Wetstein were, were part of a presentation at a national Schoology conference. And Ms. Wetstein and Ms. Perez, our director of concurrent enrollment, and Jenny DeVito, who is a school psychologist at Falcon High, presented at the case conference on our ICAP process. We have some more opportunities to present coming up. Dr. Fletcher and I are going to be presenting on moving beyond black and white and infusing diversity into school operations. So there are some good things happening with opportunities to share the great story. And one of the great stories that I'm going to share is from opening day at Odyssey Elementary, where they really take to heart our, our cultural compass values of being respectful and caring and showing they were, they were thoughtful and strategic about a system where their fifth graders, who are like the seniors of the elementary, walked hand in hand the kindergarten students into the lunchroom and helped them find what they needed to find and get sat down at their table and get their juice box or their milk carton opened. And then they looked back around to the front and picked up another kindergartner and walked them through the line. And I thought that was a great example to start the year of, of leadership, of compassion and of care. And then the final thing that I want to share with you is, I read today that when they posted the position for superintendent in the Ray School District here in Colorado, one of the applicants for the position of superintendent was a three-person team, and that's who they hired. So there is now a second district that has a three-member, they call their model the distributed leadership model. If you don't know where Ray is, it's halfway between Holyoke and Idalia. So east of Yuma, right along the Nebraska border. So it is, it is definitely a more rural community, but it's a community that is also trying innovative approach. And so we're gonna, we're gonna make a little call and see if we can talk to our, our other fellow tri leader up in Ray. Thought that was something you might enjoy hearing about, because their board may need to give you a call and see, well, how do you manage three at once?
Okay, anything else? Anyone? All right, 6.0 is open forum. Anybody sign up? Ellen, do you know the rules of three minutes and no personal complaints and all that? Okay, then I'm not going to read my whole spiel because it's quite a bit. So I'll just, I so I'll just invite you to come up and make sure you say your name first. Thanks.
First, I want to say I missed all of you, everybody here. I was pretty sick, so I couldn't walk. And thanks to medication, I'm back. Or too hungry to die, right? That's probably more like it. I would like you to run for school board again. Please, please, please. Okay, I read in the Park and Herald, there's a problem with the traffic at the schools. And yes, it gets congested, congested, but I picked Trevor up at Skyview Middle School. And there's a lot of traffic, and I do park in the handicap spot, which is a big concern. People not being able to get out. But you go there, as long as you're patient, you're out of there within five minutes. It's really not a big deal. And when I pull out of the parking lot into the line of traffic going out, people are very nice. They're always like, come on, you can get in front of me. I mean, people there are very nice about it. The only problem there I have is people abusing handicap spots. I'm just gonna go run in and grab my child and depart there. And I flacked horns with a couple people. And I'd called the police on one person, and police didn't even come out. I said, sorry. And one teacher told one parent of a child that is, from what I could see, not severely handicapped. He was able to walk. And I told her she couldn't park there without a handicap tag, and she didn't have one. And the teacher told her she can park in the handicap spot. She can get a $500 ticket for doing so. But it's not the teacher's place to say where and where not she can park. And then the other problem is since I'm, I worked emergency room for many, many years, taking care of people. Now I'm the one who has to be taken care of. I know when people need medications and when they don't. So it's not something I'm pulling out of the air. So with the medical marijuana, and I'm sure you probably have kids in the school district that are on it. People are moving here, kids that have seizures. And I agree, it's against the law to have it in the school district. But parents can pull their kid out during school hours, go to their car, medicate them, and send them back to school. And people that really need it, like in my case, you don't really get addicted to it. People that take it and don't need it are the ones that seem to be getting addicted to it. But kids that have severe seizures need the medication, because every time they have a seizure, they could die. And in my case, if that's my family member, I would do, including break under law, to help them. Of course, I wouldn't do it on school grounds, but you know, a little common sense. But anyhow, so please give a little leniency when you have a child that is on medical marijuana or other kind of medication. Okay? I love you guys.
Thanks, Ellen. That is it for our open forum. We will move on to our action items. So we will start with 7.01, action on innovation plans. We'll start with A. Power Zone.
After review and discussion at the previous board meeting, I move to approve the attached innovation plan for the Power Zone as recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.01B, which is the Power Zone Schools.
After review and discussion, I move to approve the innovation plans for the Power Zone Schools as recommended by the administration.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.01C, which is our resolution.
I move to approve the resolution for the Power Zone, the Odyssey Elementary School, Ridgeview Elementary School, Stetson Elementary School, and Skyview Middle School, and the Vista Ridge High School revised innovation plan.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.02, approval of resolutions for revised innovation plans.
I move to approve the resolution for the Horizon Middle, the Evans International Elementary School, and Falcon Middle School revised innovation plans.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.03, action on bond refinance proposal.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance by Falcon School District number 49 of its general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2015, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 5,475,000 provided for the levy of ad valorem taxes for the payment of such bonds, providing the form of such bonds and other details with respect to such bonds of the payment thereof, approving other documents related to such bonds and the payment thereof, approving other documents relating to such bonds, allowing for the president of the board, the district chief education officer, or the chief business officer to execute the sales certificate.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All right, if there's no discussion, we'll take a vote.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. But I do have to say that was the longest portion of any board packet I think I've read in six years. Took me a while to get through all of that very legalese stuff, so I'm glad it passed and we don't have to read it again. 7.04, action on new and reclassified job descriptions.
After review at the last board meeting, I move to approve the reclassified job description for a central enrollment supervisor.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was A. Now we have B. The Lead Campus Security Officer.
After discussion at the July 9th board meeting, I move to approve the Lead Campus Security Officer job description.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.05, action on policy revisions.
After review and discussion, I move to approve the revisions to policy ILBC and temporarily approve revisions to policy IKA to meet statutory requirements.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
When we say temporarily approve, what we mean is, it has to be immediately approved, but then it's gonna, you'll see it on another agenda in, after we've done two readings to approve the exact same thing over again. It doesn't mean we're gonna put it in place and then pull it off in a couple of weeks. It's because we have to get it in place for the law, but then our policy requires two readings. So we didn't have time to do it because the legislature took too long to get it to us in the first place.
A vote, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.06, approval of supplemental budget for Fund 16.
I move to approve the supplemental Fund 16 district budget for the fiscal year 2014-15 as presented by the administration.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
If I could just say a couple of things about that. I know it's a little unconventional here. Now that the fiscal year has passed, to have a supplemental budget for that fiscal year. Hopefully, reading the cover sheet, you understand that this is related, related to the refinance for the COPs that we did back in February. Once we had the auditors in here in June, we were able to confer with them on the entry that's necessary for that. There's no net impact to fund balance or whatever. It's just that these things flush both the revenue and through expense. When something goes through expense, that means it affects appropriation. Appropriation means it needs your, another formal endorsement, basically, of what we've already done. So that's why we're doing that.
Okay, then a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.07, appoint board representative to attend the Casby Delegate Assembly.
I move to appoint Marie Lavier Wright as the board representative to serve as a delegate at Casby's September Delegate Assembly.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. 7.08, approval of intergovernmental agreement between, between District 49 and El Paso County Clerk and Recorder for the November 2015 election.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Falcon School District 49 and the El Paso County Board of Commissioners, the El Paso County Clerk and Recorder in the state of Colorado, as presented and to adopt the attached resolution stating that the jurisdiction, Falcon School District 49 agrees to the terms and conditions of the intergovernmental agreement.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher. Harold.
Aye.
Irons. Livia Wright.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion carries. That is it for our action items. Next is 8.0, and 8.01 and 2, those are expulsion and progress improvement, process improvement updates that are just for our information only. So we will go right into 9.0 discussion items. And first up is our Schoology tutorial and update with Brian Greene.
All right, good evening. My name's Brian Greene, and I'm honored and excited to share with you something that has really become a passion of mine and many others throughout our district, and that's a, a learning tool made available to, to all of our educators and leaders called Schoology. And it took a while to kind of learn how to pronounce the word Schoology. Being a longtime science teacher, science person, I first looked at that, thought it was Schoolology, but I was later corrected to learn that it's Schoology. And what I'd like to do is share with you why, you know, I, I developed this passion, this excitement about, about a tool in, in our teacher and leader toolbox. But first, if you would please bear with me, I would like to, I would like to tell you a little story about my suit. But as I, as I'm rambling on about my suit, if you have a device and you're willing to participate, I sent out login credentials and also included a homework assignment. Some of you did. Great job. And so I would like, I would like to take my time and also make this a bit participatory. And so if, if you get a chance and have a device, here's the login for that, and you'll, once you get in, click on courses, you'll see that you're already in a class. And it's this one right here, and you can follow along. And we're gonna do a little hands-on activity as we go along too. All right? But about my suit, you might be surprised to know that I've never owned a suit. In fact, this is my very first suit ever, ever. And I don't know how I made it through 29 years of education and other things and not had needed a suit. And so not too long ago, I got a suit. A couple days ago, I got it. I thought, what a great time to wear a suit to present to the school board meeting. And sure enough, I look around and a lot of people have suit coats on and all that kind of stuff. And I feel a little bit out of place with the suit, I'll be honest with you. And and so I chose a suit because I thought it was like classic, right? Classical charcoal gray and school board meeting. It's safe. I'd probably fit in pretty good. In some cases, you know, it, it makes the presenter look distinguished, and in other cases, maybe not so much. But enough about the suit, because the suit really doesn't represent what I want to focus on. I want to focus on this incredible powerful tool. And so the suit's gotta go. The tie's gotta go. A year, a year ago, you, you honored me and allowed me to stand before you in my first ever District 49 school board meeting. And I had a white shirt on and a green tie, and we talked about the Aha! Network, which is going great, and it matched the, it matched the exclamation point, Aha! Network. I think some of you recognize that. Well, I had Schoology blue on today, but it's gotta go too. And so while I'm, while I'm talking about Schoology and preparing, I just want to point out that I come before you as a professional. I am the District 49 online professional learning specialist. And I'm also a National Schoology ambassador. There are about a dozen of us nationwide, and we're, we're out there promoting this great thing called Schoology. And so thanks for bearing with me and giving me a chance to cool off a little bit too. But let me tell you a, a little bit about what Schoology is doing in our district and what it is. Schoology is a learning management system. Two years ago, when I started this search and this adventure, I had no idea what a learning management system was. But I knew as an educator, I was, you know, I was always looking for new ways to connect with kids and with parents and the community and leaders and all of it. And so we needed a way to reach teachers and educators and leaders throughout the district because of our, the size and scope and, and the way we were growing and all that. Trying to, trying to find a way to offer professional development to all, all of our stakeholders in a very efficient manner. So in other words, try to, try to kind of bring District 49 into the 21st century and create some online learning opportunities. And it, it went over great. But I needed a tool to do it, and I stumbled upon this great find called Schoology. And so that's kind of our story. And then we started off about a year and a half ago, offering our very first online course taught by Teresa, Teresa Ritz on the Marzano teaching strategies on the art and science of, of teaching. And it was a great hit. We had dozens and dozens of teachers and educators take that course, and feedback was awesome. And I'm gonna share with you here in a little bit how much that's actually grown. And so so how, how are we using it today? Well, today, in, in, in two short months, after kind of rolling it out as a professional development tool, we, the senior leadership in the district thought that it makes sense that, that we should get the tool into the hands of teachers and others. And so they, they made that happen. But before I talk about how it's being used, I want to tell you what it can do. Because right now, it's, it's still pretty much a mystery to a lot of people in the room. But it's a, it's a management system. If you've ever taken an online course, this could be that tool to deliver an online course. If you've ever done anything that's blended, this could be that tool that creates blended learning as well. Teachers throughout the district are using it a lot of different ways, and we're using it a lot of different ways to, to reach our educators and leaders as well. So it's a, it's a teaching tool. It's a professional development tool. It's a tool to make learning anywhere, anytime, available to, to kids, to teachers, to leaders, and to parents. When I look at the rocks over on the wall, I, I can show you how Schoology actually fits in each one of those rocks and building learning communities and building trust. We have, we have schools that put their lesson plans out on Schoology so parents can get in there and see what their kids are learning. And we're, we're just scratching the surface, but I'm gonna talk more about how we're using it in just a moment. It's a great tool for sharing, for differentiation in the classroom, for collaboration. Really, its strength is to be able to, to share learning, to create learning communities, build, share resources, to share conversation, to share collaboration. It's a great tool for engagement. It reaches kids. It reaches our, our younger educators and others, kind of where they're at. With, with gadgets in their hand, with, with their nose kind of buried in a screen. It's just another way to kind of connect dots with kids and reach learners where they're most comfortable. And it's, it's powerful. It's got other powerful things, self-grading tools. It has some, some really robust, powerful common assessment tools about to, about to roll out. It, it kind of started when some young college students wanted to, to help each other learn about 2006, 2007. So they wrote a little program and they shared notes. And from there, it grew, and they learned they could share conversation, they could share other things, and it's evolved. And last year, this product, it's only been out a few years, but the product went through 250 product updates and 50 new, 50 new features were added, just in the year that we, we put it in play. So, so it's really, it's really powerful. It's really changing. It's bringing, it's bringing our zones together. It's connecting us in ways that, that we, we need to be connected. So now, how are we using it in the district? Before we do that, we're gonna take a quick poll. If you were able to log in on another page, I created this, this poll. It says, "Welcome to Schoology, a learning management tool that enables educators to use leverage teaching, or to leverage, rather, teaching time, talent, resources, and for collaboration. Please take part in the poll below if you wish. Make a selection that best fits your experience with Schoology." That poll is over on the left where you see updates. So if you've logged in, click, please click on updates. And it will take you to a new screen. And this, this is, this is a landing page. And it's, it's also, it sort of has a Facebook built to it. The difference is, it's, it would be that it's that safe place where only the students in the class and the teacher have access. And so, so kids, kids catch on really quick, and it's because it's real, it's real familiar to them. So I, I voted, I put my vote in there, and then some teachers use So I, I voted, I put my vote in there and then some teachers use this actually, and we'll use it as, as entrance and exit polls in different learning scenarios, but they use it as bellwork. You know, they'll use it as a quick, you know, just a, a quick check of, of learning for that particular day or period. So I'm going to have to hit refresh to see the difference. So most have heard of Schoology, but not quite sure what it does.
No. I had, I have used Schoology, but I don't know if it showed my vote. How do you?
If you can't vote again... Yeah, if, if, if you can't vote again, then it, it put the vote up here. Are you not seeing it? It's up here now, if that's your vote there. Are you seeing the poll? Okay. It may show up here in a moment. We can look later at that if you, if you'd like. How's it, how's it being used in District 49? Well, we started off, like I said, for professional development needs. And in 2002, we offered zero online courses and had zero completers, obviously. And then the first year we rolled it out, we had 26 courses and 281 completers. And last year, we, we almost tripled that number and we had 77 online courses ran through Schoology and 1,180 users. And so across the district, educators, leaders are using it in various ways. In professional development, we've created courses focused on differentiation, how to use Schoology for principal induction, evaluator training, lead mentor training, to certify our own career and technical education instructors so they don't have to go out to MJC, CSU and other places. We, we actually certify them ourselves because of this and building cultural capacity and dozens and dozens of other offerings we've made available with that. So, so Mr. Fletcher's used it to, to roll out a district-wide initiative in a course called Building Cultural Capacity. I talked about Nikki Lester's CT certification. The timing was really good too for the teachers because we just had that first rollout of the iPads, the one-on-one iPad initiative. They needed a way to manage learning with those. It's one thing to put the device in the kid's hand, there's another thing to provide the learning and be able to manage that learning. And so this became a very valuable tool and, and nobody rocks it quite like Melissa Riggs at Woodman Hills Elementary School. And she uses it for her one-to-one iPad. Margaret Jurick uses it to create self-paced independent study courses at Vista Ridge. I and Nick, Ian Nichol and his staff are using it to create park-like assessments. We're using it for training courses and iConnect Zone through Michelle Colehouse and others. Amy Craig saw the power in badges, built and created badges and, and rewards staff for, for quality work. Kim Steves creates, created a group where she shares out resources and announcements and makes everything available to, to employees throughout the district. We certify our nurses. Jennifer Gabrielson has an online school for all of her nurses to become certified in different areas like CPR, first aid, medication and, and all those kinds of things. Kathy Beetles really embraced the power of, of Schoology last year when she rolled out Engage New York Math. And she was sending home homework to, for kids to do at home, but the parents were getting frustrated because they didn't, they didn't understand the concept, great concepts, they were just confused. And so she realized if she just did a little two-minute lesson on every Engage New York lesson and get the parents on board, they could watch the two-minute video and they could successfully help their kids and engage in their kids' learning. And I'm seeing more and more people start to get on, parents start to get on. Mr. Ryan, you mentioned last night at open house, you've got your access code to, to be able to kind of follow what your children are learning over there. And I know I'm out of time. Oh, there's just so much going on with Schoology. I was going to show you, I was going to highlight that and maybe I will real quick until you kick me off the podium. But you can put reading in there and you can highlight it, kids can have it read to them. The kid, I put the video here, I put the video in here, not to play it, but to kind of remind you that sometimes a kid just needs to hear something 10 times. We have time to let him hear it twice, maybe. We can tell him, we can show him, we can let him experience it, we can remind him what we told him, but they need to hear it 10 times. And so we put learning in the hands of, of kids, we put learning in the hands of the parents and we create this learning community. And so that's, that's sort of the vision, where are we heading from here? We're continuing to offer district-wide conferences and getting more and more teachers and parents and leaders on board. As our senior leadership vision continues to move forward with this, I'm seeing the trickle down with other leadership components and people are starting to discover the leverage power of Schoology and how it can leverage teaching time, talent, resources and collaboration. So I would love to go on and on. The meeting went really quick. I, I, I told Amber, maybe I can get an hour instead of 15 minutes. I really have a passion for this. I, I think there's something there, we're seeing it grow and hopefully I can come back, maybe to workshop or something and, and give you more information on that. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'm going to go pick my suit up off the, off the ground. So thank you so much. Any questions other than, I, I don't know about your vote? We can look into that though.
I just wanted to say, thank you for working with everyone to bring this tool because I think my husband's going back to college and although it's an in-seat class and he goes to class seven or eight hours a week, all of his work is on a management tool like this. So his, everything he's graded on in his graduate level courses is submitted through something online, all of the discussion groups, all of his papers. And so our students learning to use this mechanism before they move on is really important because this is most likely how they're going to be expected to communicate everything as they go on in their education. And we really do them a disservice if we aren't helping them to learn how to access these things and how to be more independent in their learning. And I know my sixth grader is already in a blended classroom and they're doing flipped classrooms for her writing where she's watching all of her lessons at home. She was doing it last night and she had to replay a couple of things over and over before she took her notes. And I thought it was great because she could get, she knew where she needed to go and she knew what she didn't understand. So she could go back and try and listen to it again. And if she's getting that when she's 11, imagine what she's going to be ready for when she doesn't have all of us there to support her. So I think it's great.
Thank you.
So I think there's a lot of applications to, to this. So one time, I don't think is enough for us. So we may need to bring him back at some point, you know? So what do you guys think about that?
Might be a nice retreat topic. We have our board retreat, we could have a little more training because that's a long day for us.
Send me an invitation, I'd love to share this with you and share my passion with you and, and show you sort of the potential this thing has. It's, it's, it's pretty much a canvas, the teachers, the leaders that, that are using this, they're the artists, it's just amazing to see what's going on. I really had intention to, to jump into some of these courses and show you what they're doing. You can't jump into them because of permission levels, but it's going to show you what's going on, it's really fantastic. And I, I'll have to say early on, and again, I'm going to reiterate, just having the, the senior leadership vision and the other visions, really creating, creating the, keeping that momentum going is going to make this thing happen. I know a year ago, Mr. Hill, you brought all your leaders together to talk about graduation summit, graduation tracks and all that. And before 100 leaders invested time to talk about this new vision of graduation and all that, they first had an exercise of, of, of doing some reading, watching some video and engaging in some collaboration on three discussion threads. Everyone had a voice, the thoughts were deep. When everyone walked into the room, the meeting was incredible because everyone knew kind of what was on, on the table, what was at stake. And it was the most amazing, powerful thing I've seen in a long, long time. And so from there, we, we hit the ground running, it's been incredible. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I got a crash course in Schoology when I was at a Sand Creek back meeting and they did all their stuff through that, so would have been good to have this before. Thank you for doing that. All right, now, 9.02 is new job descriptions, which is instructional technology and now analyst. Who wants to jump in with that? John, did you want to talk about it?
While John is coming up, I want to point out, just kind of give John some kudos here because rather than doing this analysis that led to this recommendation in a vacuum, he collaborated with our human resources department, looked at what else is happening out in the market. And so I know he'll, he'll reiterate what they learned, but great example of collaboration across departments and collaboration really outside of the district to go and find out what's going on in the world that we compete with, not just for students, but for leaders, for workers and for members.
I have to tie everything back too because when I started the process and I, my initial email to Becky Angasser, first response was, "I've got it all built in Schoology." So all the forms that I needed, all the, all the checklist that I had to go through, they were all there. And you know, a conversation that might take a half hour and a meeting and everything else was literally a sentence-long email and everything was there for me. So it was beautifully laid out. The position does already exist. However, it, we found out after one year of having this position in place, I needed more time with this position to get all the jobs that are done. And also the, the skill set was kind of expanding, which helps free up my time to do more of the initiatives that we're trying to work on in the district. Honestly, I, I think 60% of what makes this position valuable to us is when we give students an iPad and that, that's their iPad with everything that's on it. Some of our zones have so much explosive growth, we don't have a spare iPad to give to that student if it gets broken. So we can't wait for a ticket system, we can't wait for resolution analysis or anything like that. The position, the person who has this position currently is able to get up, pick the iPad up. We have a great contract with a person downtown locally that's repairing our iPads. He has it fixed and turned around and brought back the next day. So we really try to minimize how much time that iPad's out of the student's hand. It works well for staff too and he's also going to start, we have a quickly growing fleet of Chromebooks. He's also going to help us out with Chromebooks too. With state testing, even having a few of them out would be kind of detrimental to the assessment plans that the buildings build. If we plan on 30 Chromebooks in a room and we only have 28, after we schedule those two kids, it would really slow us down. So really helpful for that, to have someone that's in the backend tracking all of that stuff. So we're recognizing the skill set there and we're also recognizing that we need more days to get all the work done.
Then we'll move it forward as an action item at our next meeting. All right, 9.03 is our performance excellence report.
So I'll, I'll jump in with, with just some, some updates on that. We are in the midst of our detailed work on submitting the application to REMPEX. The organizational profile was completed last week and that's looking really good. And then we have a, a, a to-do list of which Tammy and I have big things to do on that in the next week. So several of us, you know, several folks are, are really working hard on this. And I think one of the things that's really being valuable about this is that your performance excellence is also called process improvement. And process improvement, I will say, to have process improvement means you got to have process. Well, to have, we have process, but what we haven't had is a lot of documentation to process. And so this whole exercise is really getting us to formalize, to document those processes that we have in place, that we have had in place for quite a long time. But to do so in a way that you can demonstrate to an outside entity like, like REMPEX is going to be for us, that this is what we're doing, this is how it works. And, and we're also then, you know, learning a lot about ourselves. When you try and lay that out there in a program, you start to find out, here's, here's some of our, our, I won't say weak points, but things that we have opportunities for improvement, you know, that, that jump out at us right away. And so, you know, as, as we've said to you, we're, you know, we're not going to be submitting this application to Rocky Mountain Performance Excellence, looking for the, the top kudos, we're looking for the opportunities to learn. And, and again, the process is, starts that learning right now.
Yeah, I think if I can echo that, that's one of the things that I've noticed is we've gone through, especially on the operational side. We have, we've had, we had a meeting yesterday and a little bit follow-up and we actually have some action items that are due next Thursday so we can get them to Zach and his crew. But one of the things that's really been kind of evident, and there's a few of us, being Amber, myself and Matt, that are also getting double-dipped with it because we're also going through the examiner process and that's a learning curve of itself. But it's really kind of interesting because some of the things that you're learning and some of the things that we're learning is, and I echo what Brett just said, is we have the processes, but we really haven't taken the time to actually document them. And one of the things that, that we did just recently, one of our processes, we started flowcharting it, it was really kind of evident, you begin to realize, oh, wait a minute, we didn't think about that. And so I think that's one of the things that I, that I'm taking from this as well is from an operational standpoint, it's really going to help us cement what those processes really are and refine them and actually get better. And I share with my staff as well, and part of the reason is, and I think I'll echo what Peter said, is that, you know, you can enter it for, to get an award, you can actually do it for operational improvement. And that's really what we're doing, is the operational improvement side of it. I'll chime in on the flowcharting side. I just was looking around the room to try to, to look at how many of the leaders that are here tonight have generated in the last two months since we adopted a, a software for developing flowcharts. At least eight people in this room, and it's probably more than that, have developed some kind of a process map. And there's kind of a joke where you go to a small town and you ask somebody directions to something, you know, I need to get to a restaurant. And they say, well, go down to where the Kmart used to be before it burned down. And, and that's kind of how a lot of our processes ran. You had to have some organizational memory, you had to know who or what or what got burned down. And what, what the flowcharts are doing is mapping out for us and for people that will succeed us and to come along and join the team, how we do things. And over and over and over, what it's showing is, oh, I didn't know we did that there. I didn't know, I didn't, we just, a lot of these things that we do, we take for granted because we know them, but that makes it harder for us to talk about them. So you're going to see us coming, coming forward in, in our subsequent performance improvement and process improvement reports. We're going to, we're going to show you some of these first draft process tools, flowcharts, checklists, rubrics. We're going to show you these tools because we're realizing how powerful they are for us to hold each other accountable. They'll be very powerful for you to hold us accountable as well because we've laid out what we think is the optimal process and then you can query to see if we followed it. So this is a profound work that, that you started us down the road on back in January and the distance we will have come by this coming January is going to be pretty amazing.
I just have to say, when looking at the last meeting we had with our very brief overview of our organization, I've been on this board for six years and I've been in this district a lot longer than that. And where we have come in the last three years is, is really impressive to me. And so I want to thank you guys for helping us get to where we are now from where we were three years ago. It, it is night and day and I can't thank you guys enough for what you've done for us so far. And I am really excited of where we're going to go with this. So thank you guys very much. It's emotional for me. It's a good thing, good thing that we've got going on. The next good thing we have going is our 49 pathways update.
And I'm going to do the, the primary amount of this update, just, just verbally because you know that 49 pathways is our secondary model. It's the format that we're using to transition our students to a, a new future graduation environment where they will, where they will graduate, earn diplomas and, and earn other certifications based on demonstration of mastery. And as we are getting into this new school year, one of the things that is consistent across all of our schools is that each of our, our high schools in particular, each of our high schools has developed a model that they will be using to help our students develop their ICAPS, their individual career and academic plans and help them identify opportunities that lead them toward a career certification or or an industrial preparation or a college application or scholarship. And this is a place where our, our priorities are revealed by our resources. So we're, we're identifying specific teachers and other educators. In some cases, we're giving them release time, in other cases, we're giving them a stipend or we're changing their course load somewhat so that they can focus in and serve students. And so the major thing that I wanted to update the board about in terms of 49 Pathways is, this is really year one. Year zero was, was beginning really back in April of 14 with that meeting that Brian referenced and beginning to think about what would the pathways approach look like in, in the district. And now over, over a year later, we've come back around and now we're actually in, in year one where we're implementing those original plans with adults connecting with students. And so many of us who have children in high school are gonna be experiencing that, we're gonna get connected with an advisor. That advisor is gonna walk our child through some, some pretty specific planning. So it's very exciting to see where it's going. And I really encourage you as, as board members, as you're out in the community, as you're visiting with our principals and, and our, our other, our middle school and, and high school principals, ask them about this, what's happening with 49 Pathways? How is that starting to, to shape and organize? Because it's already having an impact on schedules, block versus, versus singleton schedules through the day. It's having a direct impact on staffing models, it's having an impact on the calendar about when they do different things. It's driving concurrent enrollment, it's driving course selection. Because the students are seeing what the prerequisites are to get where they want to go. And in a larger context, it is beginning to shape what other school districts are doing around the state. We're gonna have a team come down from the Aurora School District to look at our, our approach to innovation and our approach to graduation. And it's because of the presentations that we've been able to do and some of the recognition, like from CDE for our ICAP project. So 49 Pathways is incredibly primordial, it's very embryonic, it's just getting going. But it is getting going in, in a good way, with good adults and good commitment from our building. So expect to hear a lot about that, not necessarily as a 49 Pathways update, but what you're gonna hear is when we talk about assessment, you'll hear how that connects to students personalizing their pathways. And when you hear about new course proposals or even new hires that we're making, you're gonna hear us repeatedly linking that back to our 49 Pathways model for secondary. So it's very good things that are happening, we thank you for your support. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them. But I can just tell you, stay tuned, lots of good stuff is going on.
All right, moving right along. 9.05 is our resolutions for CASB and that is Marie.
Okay, so the way I approached this was the same as last year where I asked the chiefs to come up with anything that they were looking at based on, on the review of our, what resolutions are already present. The first feedback was, don't let the ones we already got on go away. So, because what happens when you go to the delegate assembly is they literally go through every single resolution that's in that book and re-decide whether it's something they want to continue to support. So I'll be on the lookout for people trying to take them off because that's what happened last time is all four of ours were recommended from approval by CASB's committee. I got there and all four of them got pulled off by other school districts. And I was able to argue them back in, so we were able to get all four of our things pushed through. But, so the biggest piece that Amy Atwood had suggested to us was to concentrate in part on special education funding. She felt that that was gonna be a place that we could make some inroads this year. And then Peter had two ideas he had submitted to me as well for us to talk about a little bit. And the first is the impact of, so this really fits in nicely with Brian's presentation. And that is the need for technology in education now, in K-12 education, and the lack of financial support for us to be able to get the technology into our student hands. And given that even state assessments now require a significant investment of technology, should we be looking at a resolution that points to that as essentially an unfunded mandate that our legislature should address, given that they're basically, by requiring testing on digital devices and 21st century skills being one of the key components that we're supposed to be addressing in graduation requirements as well, are these things that now necessitate them setting up a funding stream for schools to be able to afford the technology we need to have to get into our students' hands? So that was kind of the first topic of discussion. And we can work on wording, Peter, Brett and I, because I think that's a finance piece as well, in terms of how we put that generally through and then let the legislature try to figure out how to solve it. So I don't know where everyone is on that, are we okay on the tech piece? So tech funding is what I'm gonna call that one. And we'll work on coming up with kind of some wording that I'm sure will get modified by all kinds of people before it ever gets into the books. Yes, it has an unfunded mandate. And then the second that Peter brought up was sort of the conundrum we've been put into as school districts because the state has now passed a statute that lets us as districts decide, to decide whether we will have a policy allowing the administration of medical marijuana in schools. And at the same time, it still would put us in violation of federal law. And whether it makes sense for school districts to have a resolution around asking the federal government to address the conundrum. So that we're not put in a position of trying to either meet what our constituents are asking us to do, which puts us in violation of federal law, which then could ultimately mean loss of funding federally, or say no to what our constituents are asking us to address and have a problem there because we're trying to comply with federal law. So the question would be, should we have a resolution put forward that asks the federal government to make an exception to drug-free school zones for, and I believe Peter put it as non-psychoactive cannabinoid products?
Because quite a few, particularly in Colorado, we're seeing a lot of, as Ella mentioned, seizure disorders. Patients with seizure, seizure disorders, specifically Drury syndrome, may use a cannabis oil treatment that doesn't have THC, so it's not a psychoactive, it's not, it isn't a, a controlled substance in the way that it is, but because it is extracted or derived from controlled substances, it falls under that federal guidance. So we're, we're essentially, what I'm asking is whether you as a board would recommend, going forward to see if CASB would recommend, asking our legislators to go forward and pursue with the feds a carve-out that would allow us to redefine those kinds of therapies apart from the controlled substances laws that, that we have and that we respect and we want to, we want to maintain. But this is a unique, it's almost a misapplication because the, the chemistry is ahead of the policy.
Well, and the other, the other piece to consider as you're thinking about it is that, just based on some of the things that have been out there, Memorial Hospital has revised their policy as a part of the University of Colorado system to now allow parents to administer cannabidiol oils in the hospital to their children. That actually made the news, it was a local D-49 parent that asked for the compassionate care. And they based their decision in part because Children's Hospital is allowing parents specifically to administer for children that have specific medical problems, predominantly seizure disorders. And the National Epilepsy Foundation is also lobbying for the same thing. So there are some other organizations trying to do it. So the question is, do we as a school district want to say, hey, other school districts, we're all in this conundrum, should we be asking this question? And so we need, I need the feedback from all of you to decide whether that's something we as a board want to look at.
Well, we have a conflict with this and us looking for funding for special needs. We're looking for funding for, you know, because we're basically unfunded as much as we should be for special needs. Would there be a conflict as, you know, moving ahead with the cannabis type of, you know, we both have, both of them are dealing with, well, one's dealing, I guess, with the state, the other one dealing with the federal government. It seems as close though.
I, I don't know that there would be a conflict, in, in part because when the federal government looks at, at funding special education services, that really the unit of funding is the child. So they really identify, they identify the level, need and the level of support. And then that, that gets averaged out at the state and distributed across the strait, across the strait. So the funding stream happens on, on one mechanism. And we're not really asking to go as, as a district alone to address this issue of, of cannabis oil. We're encouraging our state association of districts to collaborate with other entities, perhaps with the, the Association of School Executives or with medical entities or with our legislature, to go together to the federal government and seek relief, probably legislative relief. So I, I don't think we would see any impact from that effort. Because by the time it rolls up even to the state level, it would, it would have to necessarily be an agreement of many school districts, not just ours.
Well, it would be nice not to be in conflict with the federal laws and everything, so if we can. I, I, I think that's a great idea to see if as a group CASB can do it.
This is the joy of being a bellwether state, we're literally the spearhead going after federal legislation. We've been thrown into this by a constitutional amendment. It's kind of an incredible place to be. And, you know, this, this has been going on in the banking industry since legalization. And so we're not the first federally regulated, I guess, organization dealing with it. Is it, I don't have the answer, good luck for whoever has to decide.
Yeah, well, the state put us in the middle by coming up with something that left it up to us without giving us a way to deal with the federal component. So now we're kind of, this would be a request to say, okay, guys, but you still need to solve this piece to help us instead of saying, let us figure out a way to not violate federal law.
We're volleying back across the net to them.
Anything else on that? Okay, then 10.0, other business? Nothing? Then we'll do 11.0 adjournment, can I have a motion please?
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a vote please.
Butcher?
Aye.
Harold?
Aye.
Irons?
Aye.
Livia Wright?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned at 7:33.